Yo, yo.
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 Hold on, I'd like to see myself bigger. There you go.
You there, Kenny?
Yeah.
We're in on the first, uh, Mr. President.
Council meeting will now come to order on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. You stand. What do we need to say?
Bye. In the next take away. Since we're about it, for which it stands, our nation, our God, and this is all, we never see it just as a card off.
For Medina, roll call please. First District Councilwoman, Monica Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Third District Councilwoman, Terrence Hill. Fourth District Councilwoman, Stacy Winfield.
President.
Fifth District Councilwoman, Robert Garcia.
President.
Sixth District Councilwoman, Gilda Orr. Councilwoman at large, Dwayne Rant.
Right.
Councilwoman at large, Vanessa Hernandez Orr.
President.
Councilwoman at large, Kenneth Monroe.
Yeah.
That's the president, Lenny Franciski.
President.
For the record, uh, Mr. Corrigan did get a call from Councilwoman Orange, saying she will not be attending the South of Tennessee. And we do have a third councilman, Terrence Hill, here as well.
Here. Noted.
And I have a motion to accept the minutes, the regular reading on Wednesday, on Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Hold on a minute, President.
Thank you.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Garcia, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Have any questions on the motion? For Medina, roll call please. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hill?
Uh, thank.
Winfield?
Here, yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Bransford?
Yes.
Hernandez Orr?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Who have any communications from the mayor? I have none. Any communications from the ordinance? I have accounts payable warrants, zero five, two eight, two five, C.C. And zero five, two eight, two five, L.A.
Hold on a minute, President.
Thank you.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Garcia, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez, to accept the accounts payable warrants. Have any questions on the motion? For Medina, roll call please. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Bransford?
Yes.
Hernandez Orr?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
Payroll warrant by weekly, zero five, two three, two five. Hold on a minute, President.
Thank you.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Garcia, seconded by Councilwoman Winfield, to accept the payroll warrant. Any questions on the motion? Roll call please. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
Bransford?
Yes.
Hernandez Orr?
Yeah.
Monroe?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
I believe we do have a Ms. Knight here to speak.
Yes.
If you come to the podium, please, you have a few minutes.
Sure.
Thank you.
There's nobody on me. I'm ready. I'm gonna take my jacket off. It's a little warm.
I speak with you. True. Councilwoman Hill?
Yes, I invited, uh, Ms. Knight to come speak for us. She's the director of the Harbor Health here in Pagamon, formerly Lake County area. So now she changed her name, did a lot of amazing things, so I want her to explain to us whatever I love when you go somewhere, told you. You know that.
Yes. My name is Delaine Knight. I'm the, uh, nursing home administrator at Harbor Health and Rehab. We have, uh, remodeled the facility. Things are looking very good in the facility. I would like to invite anyone to come out and take a look. Uh, we offer a little care. We also offer short one day rest state. If your family member might need a break and, and, uh, anybody that you know, we have rest stays where we keep them in a private room. We have private suites. Our therapy department is wonderful to get them back home if that needs be. But we would just like to, you know, let you guys know that we are in the community and we are willing to serve the community. So if you know anybody and needs our services, please, please have them come by and take a look at this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Thank you. Ms. Knight, thank you for that information. Uh, if you do me a favor, uh, when the clerk's off, would you get our email address? And then if you could send us what you guys offer there, I think we could all benefit.
That would be great, yes. I definitely can. From her.
You feel to mention that, uh, the new facility is impeccable. They have on, you know, they call them tags, and stuff is not correctly done in the bank system. They have been five years untagged.
Yes.
That means it's a clean building, things are going well. Uh, one tag cost you. They went five years with no tag.
And I can also say last week, this, uh, one of our lovely residents' families did call and stayed on house, you know, saying that we were doing something wrong and they left what we know finally. So we are definitely in going in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Knight.
What do you want? Our attorney's still trying to get in on Zoom. So she said that the link that it will send, it's, uh, not working. Right. It says that the other, there's another meeting in progress, so I'm not sure if they gave us a complete or is she still trying to get on Zoom?
Is there another link? What do you?
As, um, where do you know? She should have the email.
She does. That's the one she's using. But she says that there's another meeting in progress. So the problem is she would have to, uh, send it. You can send her a link of this or go to, invite, go to participants. Uh, the bottom right there and invite her in, uh, that little, and then invite right there. And then you could email her, uh, go to email. Do you have any volunteers that you can get to the clerk's office so they can give it to you?
Well, I could drop some off. I was coming from my granddaughter, graduated kindergarten. This is all coming from Illinois.
I'll pick them up for you and I'll take them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So she'll give you some for sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is it working? The problem is that she's trying to use the same code or same password and there is something in session, so she's not going to be able to get to that because it is in session. She actually needs the link to that. And I don't think that, I mean, I don't know.
And that's the thing. She said, she's saying that she's using the link that they sent. I don't know who sent.
Kristen sent it.
Will say so, my answer.
No. Are you using your same password? Problem? So the link was sent or no? Yes. No.
You said Google. No, I didn't. I'm just clicking on Google. One, do we have any committee reports? Do we have any board reports? Ron, do we have any orders on first reading? We have two orders of that first reading. Orders twenty-five dash zero, zero, one, zero, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland. In order to city of each car adopting municipal vehicle excise tax in a concurrent wheel tax pursuant to Indiana Code.
Thank you, motion table, President.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Garcia, seconded by Councilwoman Monroe. Table ordinance twenty-five dash zero, zero, one, zero. Any questions on the motion, Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, uh, I just want to tell, uh, everybody, you know, I didn't know something I had planned. I'm gonna be all in very, um, worried about this, but then Thomas sends, you know, some more to America. And so that's gonna give as much questions as that nation before today's meeting. I think he's always prepared for this to be put in our lap. And us, I do our due diligence just to try to find out what avenue we can, um, get to, you know? I'd like to see other things that, uh, the city should do instead of before we do this. I understand that, uh, the governor or the legislature passed as well that, uh, in order for us to get matching funds for our projects, we must pass this real tax. I believe you all understand it, but we still need to take this in depth look at this, uh, this ordinance. Um, because I believe, I know Councilwoman Gonzalez was talking to me, uh, I think, uh, did you say, what's the minimum, seven dollars?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty per car. We're going already to, um, forty dollars. Uh, I think we just need to do a due diligence, uh, that has some meetings on this, Mr. President, and then we can take it from there.
Councilwoman Winfield?
Uh, Mr. President, or whoever needs the password. I work nine to five. I don't have, I don't, I can't look at my personal emails during the day. So when I get emails, once I get on at five thirty, it's not, I'm not looking at everything that's on that email when I've been notified an hour or two hours before I get on, before I come to this meeting. Basically, what, not even an hour, a half hour. I think it's unfair to send us items a half hour before our meeting, whether it was sent early during the day, but most of us work, therefore we are not looking at our emails. Some of us don't have access to get on our, uh, phones to look at emails. If they just give us enough time, I think it's, frankly, you know, I was like that on the school board. I did not appreciate getting something. And that's an emergency. And our secretaries will call us to let us know, hey, this is an emergency, you all need to look at this right away. But I don't have access where all my emails are. And I don't know if everyone else feel the same, but that's what that means.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Um, I would just like to say that, you know, we received this on Friday and it's a lot to go over. Um, then there's, then there was questions that were answered today. And then we got three more items emailed.
Anything?
You can't hear anything.
I can't hear anything.
Can you hear an hour?
Yeah.
Okay. Then there were three more items that were, um, there were three more, there were three more items that were emailed today, so and then we're supposed to look over everything and then process it, which is not fair. And I know the, for the clerk, their, um, their deadline is Wednesday. So I don't think that it's fair for us to go through all of this. And again, Councilwoman Garcia did say that the minimum is seven fifty for a vehicle. The maximum is twenty-five and we're automatically charging the maximum, which I think is wrong. There's just a lot of questions and I disagree with table with it because there's just too much information for us to process and get the full amount of information that we need. Not to mention, we have questions for our, for our council too.
Councilwoman Hernandez Orr?
I do want to say thank you to Joe Marino and those individuals that did, uh, reach back out to me in regards to some of the questions that I've had. Um, on top of, I understand, uh, the continuous, uh, every meeting we have, every, we're all saying the same thing. There's lack of funds are coming in, just lack of funds coming in. I do understand that. Um, and just, we, at the beginning of this meeting, I just said, uh, we're gonna hit the residents of East Chicago in many ways. We're gonna need to take more money from the resident for sewage. We're gonna take more mon, more money for, for water and then it's gonna be a tax. While I understand in my emails, I did not use the right verbiage, but we're, I'm saying the same thing. The residents of East Chicago are gonna have to give up more of their money to fund projects, to fund whatever, maybe not sure what comes. But with saying that, I want you guys to understand that that's the biggest concern. And I think that's why there's, uh, just a continuous conversation we want to have. I also ask the question in regards to how do we actually make this equal for everyone? I have more of a bite for doing the sewage and doing the water because of the fact that every single resident is gonna have to pay, not just living. Everyone's, they're all gonna have to pay because they all use the water. Everybody gotta take a bath, right? So, but not everyone has a car registered as these looked up from in Indiana. They might live here, but they don't have, because they're actually, um, that they have registered with us. So those are all things that I know I have personally to discuss. I think we should have a finance meeting with you guys. Again, um, I do represent the city with NERC. So I just told Julio, some of the, we just passed for NERC, an extension for the twenty twenty-six market freeway project. Again, our director, the person who was in planning at that time stated to me, we're done with the project. We have all the funding needed. All we're waiting on is for him to do the other part underneath the bridge as well as the landscaping. So this is how I left the park department with that understanding. Now we're saying, you know, we have to do Kennedy Avenue in Indianapolis, again, something that's brand new. Uh, for, uh, I'm pretty to buying from, for information I had. So I'm not upset about it. Um, you guys know, I'm pretty, uh, I know everyone else has jobs. I'm gonna check it at four o'clock in the morning and I'm gonna check it at five. I think that's when you receive my emails at four o'clock or five o'clock in the morning because I'll, I'll read it. Um, so I thank you guys for giving us information. At the same time, I want you guys to understand how we feel. Hopefully come up with conclusions. Maybe it's not doing X amount of dollars. Maybe we could reduce it just to get whatever we need because some of the projects I can do is do twenty percent. That's five hundred and eighty dollars for a project of our tech really a slump. So maybe we don't need that much. I don't know. But that's a finance question. I think we should have a finance meeting. Um, I could send something over to them or do.
Can we vote on this first before we vote? Edit ourselves?
Yeah.
For Medina, roll call to table ordinance twenty-five dash zero, zero, one, zero.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hill?
No.
Winfield?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Bransford?
Yes.
Hernandez Orr?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Franciski?
Yes.
And now we will, uh, Councilwoman Hernandez Orr, and we will put that under finance. Or if you can get with, uh, Councilwoman Garcia and Councilwoman Monroe.
Councilwoman Garcia? Just to touch on that, uh, Attorney Joan, is there a deadline for us to pass this?
On, it's a hundred first. So is this the wheel tax ordinance?
Yeah.
That we're discussing right now?
Yeah.
So you, they've got, we have to pass this by June thirtieth, so we've got the next meeting that we have is June eleventh. So whatever you guys are gonna do, it, it better be before our next meeting. I mean, we, we do have another meeting on June twenty-fifth, but I would not let it go that long.
Uh, Attorney Joan, there was a conflicting date with September first.
I'm not sure what you mean.
Uh, I was told it was September first. It might be the deadline. Don't know.
I know. It's gotta be passed. It has to be passed by the, the, Tommy Tom, the light of the thirtieth.
And, and just to touch on that.
Yes, September first is by state statute. It needs to be passed by that date.
By September first.
So that it could be enacted and actually go into effect in twenty twenty-six. Procedurally, for the council, that's probably what she's referring to.
Did you hear that, Attorney Joan?
Barely.
He said that, um, by state statute, it's, should be passed by September first, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or enacted for twenty twenty-six.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, so we, so the local adoption deadline that I have is June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So maybe the executive and I need to get together on this because the, the local enactment deadline I have in my records from that in T A fourteen sixty-one is the thirtieth, so don't we get? Maybe Marino and I can get together and make sure we're, we're on the same page with that.
That's fine. Okay.
The only thing I want, my last thing is that, is, but, uh, Councilwoman Vanessa Orr said, you know, we got a lot of cars, but we have a lot of Illinois cars in here and it's not good to our residents that thing.
For Medina, next ordinance, please. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero, zero, one, one. Appropriations ordinance for Department of redevelopment, community development block grant fund two, two, six.
Let me just play country.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Hill, seconded by Councilwoman Hernandez Orr. The year ordinance twenty-five dash zero, zero, one, one, on second reading. Have any questions on the motion? No question. Uh, Councilwoman Garcia, seconded for reading.
Thank you, Ms. President. Um, Mr. Rivera, I sent you an email because I wanted to know what this money is gonna be spent on, but I didn't get nothing in my email. Sent the email saying this is gonna be spent, but what is gonna be spent on?
It's gonna be spent on our programs that we already have. Uh, there's always an action plan budget. To, uh, to HUD. And the dates that I have is July first, twenty twenty-four, June thirty, twenty twenty-five. This allocation was originally a provisional allocation. All we're asking is to approve this allocation. So in that way, we utilize the dollars to do our services. And this is the services that we provide. First of all, there's CPG administration, CPG administrative funding. Then there's housing rehabilitation program delivery, housing rehabilitation programs. And then what we call public services, I, that's understandable. Services. Part of that, and they had part districts. So you have people like Northwest, uh, Indiana, our investment alliance, CPG, M W N I, that's Northwest Indiana, that provides our adopting assistance, uh, home, or trust, Indiana plan, Catholic charities, we care for the heart, incorporate the services for East Chicago residents, Boys and Girls Club, from Greater Northwest Indiana, City of Chicago, Summer Fun Camp. We had that, uh, last, last year, but this year we couldn't do it because we didn't, wouldn't get to that point, but we can spend enough money. And all of this is attained to what we call our performance measure. Have to make sure that you, uh, identify these programs and spend them on something that will be in your timeline. If it, this year we've.
Uh, Frank, just, uh, do you have a dollar on each program?
Yes.
See, that's the information that you should send me in the evening. And I think you should send that to all of us. Okay. Use it as money that we don't spend in each program, which would have been fair to me, you know, in the whole council. And that's what I'm asking.
Send the email to me.
I didn't get it. I sent it to, uh, Sandra and I sent it to, uh, uh, control, so.
Bell's application.
But so. But you should know that. You should, you should be sending us that information. Anytime that appropriation, you get a grant, you need to know what that money is gonna be spent.
And it requires us to, uh, Councilwoman Garcia, this is always the same all the time.
Yes, that's correct. But we have to know. We're not gonna do, give you blank checks and then, and then we find out something different. You have to give us this proper respect and let us know who this money is gonna be spent.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
That's okay. My first was answered.
Councilwoman Hernandez Orr?
Uh, yes, I just want to say, uh, being in his shoes, uh, of Mr. Rivera. So, one, public funds could always be found online. So he has to give the description of what could be done. So we could actually look for that, which, um, you can. Um, the other thing is that I understand the thought of setting us, setting something every month, but, uh, or all the time for the funds, but correct me if I'm wrong, in, in the budget that is first given to us, we have grant funds that are added on there. Am I correct in saying that? Okay, hang on. Thank you.
Councilman Allen?[1745.98]
Mr. Rivera, I know you all are spending funds actively, approach, but you know, you don't. You know what the consequences can be, so I do have confidence in that we are spending, that I can see. That are beneficial for our citizens, and I won't say it to every district, that's every district, you might be spending money in all of the districts. So, you already know that you can invest in that money, they will be looking at you, right?
That's a good point, other thing too is you gotta keep in mind, my department has city overview, audits, state audits, HUD audits. So we really don't have any measure to make a mistake, do.
Absolutely.
Councilman Garcia.
Yes, uh, I don't have to look it online for anything, anytime, any department they occurs in this council. Ask for any appropriation for money grants, this is a responsibility to give us that information. You know, the mayor comes, give us uh, the information, he's been the same thing, only different department. But he comes to this council, he gives the breakdown, what he wants to spend that money on, right? That's the proper respect that he gives us, and it should be department heads also, uh, right, in the future, give us that information.
Port Medina, roll call please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia. Branch.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe. Franciscus.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Port Medina, roll, uh, any words, Tom, secondly?
We have nothing on second, we have nothing on third, we have no resolution.
Moving on, do we have any more questions?
Councilman Hill.
Yes, Mr. President, I probably, uh, I thought about this. It's referring to ordinance twenty five dash zero zero eight. And that's bonuses slash evaluation. You know, we tabled it, and I thought about it, I'm asking you to help me. I would like to throw the table and put it on, back on the table, uh, the longest off ticket. Now, one employee is in any bonuses, anything. And I thought the mayor gonna bend a little bit, but we gotta do it right, I don't, we don't wanna do this. But if some of these employees get a bonus, let's go there and do a reeval process. But wrong, we can go on that, the wrong thing on the complaint, I told them each one time I see an employee, I tell them the situation. If not, city council, if this is understanding or something, but we wanna make the right for you all to get a bonus. So if we can bring them back on the table, you all can let's go, that is, so some of these employees get the bonus. But then again, HR gonna have to start contacting these employees and letting them know this situation. But I talked to several of them, I saw them steal, don't know.
Uh, with me by Councilman Hill, seconded by Hernandez Orange, bring back ordinance twenty five dash zero 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 eight off the table. Any questions? Councilwoman Gonzalez.
One of the things that um, bothers me about this is that all the employees are deserving bonuses, that's not the question. The problem is, is that we passed, and the administration has had, went on three months to rectify everything. On first reading, we passed it, nobody was here, second reading, we passed it, nobody was here. Third reading, we tabled it because we asked for more information on how the process was gonna work. And we're still waiting for that person to come back and do her job and tell us what's going on. So now, you are asking us to bring it off the table with none of the information that we asked. And that's unacceptable to me. So, I am, I'm not gonna vote for this because of that matter. I think, like I said, everybody deserves that bonus, but they deserve, they deserve to be notified how the bonuses. Were going to be processed in the first place, and that bothers me, so we're gonna give them a pass again. And she herself, I'm just saying this, she's probably gonna get the full amount, even though she didn't fulfill her obligation to us. But that's just me, so that's, that's what I have to say about that.
Councilwoman Winfield.
Uh, wasn't there a committee that was supposed to meet with the mayor, was it?
Right, it was.
She said it had no vote, that's what she told me, I asked.
Councilman Garcia.
Yeah, uh. The evaluation is not, got nothing to do with the ordinance. Uh, and then we and Councilwoman and Orange talked about it last time, you were correct, that's not part of it at all. We can't change nothing at all, uh, so you were correct at that time, but the evaluation had nothing to do with that ordinance.
Councilwoman Hernandez Orange.
So, this is very difficult for me, because I do have a lot of um, what Councilwoman Gonzalez says. Uh, it does bother me the fact that uh. You might not get it, you might not, and the workers did not know, right? Because of the fact that, um, it wasn't sold to you January one, and maybe those extra people would, that maybe were late. And didn't punch in on chronos, and now they're gonna get deemed, and they're not gonna get the full amount. But uh, there's possibility they um, could have done better and got the full amount, right? So, those are the reasons why it's a problem for me, but at the same time. How are our city workers, who, for the most part, that the residents of East Chicago either work for the city? Or they work for the school city, so that being said, we're saying, we're gonna give them. An added charge for, for surcharges for water and sewage, that's what they're gonna ask of us to do. And we also do a wheel tax, so that means it's more money that they're gonna expense. So, I feel bad, so maybe this is the reason why we have to give them the bonus in lieu of that. Um, but I do wanna go on record stating that if this passes, every single person that is a city worker that says. You guys, as a council, did not pa- pass this and I did not get my full amount, it has nothing to do with us. We did not set those um, those standards of who gets what or what gets who, and they should have told you at a time, this is not us. Putting that on you, but it will possibly be us having to approve a wheel tax. It will possibly be us having to approve those o- other surcharges onto your. So, for that reason, I'm gonna go and approve or vote to yes on this.
Councilwoman Winfield.
You know, it's, it's not a problem getting a bonus, but like we said before. No one was notified, supervisors, as the HR director said, supervisors hasn't been told yet. They haven't been trained, employees don't know, I'm looking at, hopefully no grievances filed. Because you have employees that's been in the city twenty five, thirty years, and if that employee doesn't get the correct bonus. What does that tell us? It's not fair. This should happen January one, whether employees have time right now to notify them about your evaluation in order to get a bonus. This is the way it should happen, just slapping them in the face with this, you may get the full amount, you may not. Depending on the situation of your job performance, whether you get along with your supervisor or not. It does go that way whether we're gonna face it or not, it's just not fair for our employees to be have. For them to have to go through an evaluation at the last minute, not being told, I feel that the HR director should have been back here today. To still, to come back to us and say, did you take this back to the mayor when he, what was the conversation? We had a committee that was supposed to speak with him, we don't know what was said, if it was no luck, we don't know. She didn't come back and say, I took this back, this is what we're coming back to. And whether we bring it up at the next meeting, and maybe she can come back to the meeting and let us know. Because there needs to be some type of conversation, it's not fair to the employees, I was an employee for twenty two years. And we, and I got the bonus, but for me, if I was still there twenty two years, you're gonna tell me. Now I gotta get evaluated at the last minute before you're gonna give a bonus? Is it fair or not? It's not, start on January one, tell your employees now about the values.
Yeah, I think it's just a shame, uh, it's a bad taste to wind up that the HR department, the administration really dropped the ball. And made us look like good, good uh, good cop, bad cop. I mean, you know, we're damned if we do it, we're damned if we don't, some of these employees rather look forward toward these bonuses to take their. You know, families on vacation some, and now we're all here, you know, giving it to them where they don't even know what they're gonna get. And it's, it's a shame, it really is, and it's gotten me tired, but uh, but that's, uh, roll call please.
Gonzalez.
No.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yeah.
Garcia.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
No.
Franciscus.
Yes.
Moving on, do we have any?
Yes.
It's off the table.
Off the table.
You need a motion to adopt a third, motion to put it back.
Second.
It's on, it's on the agenda. We need a motion to adopt a third and final. Need the most adopt a third and final.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Hill, seconded by Councilman Hernandez Orange. Your ordinance twenty five dash zero 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 eight, on third final reading. Roll call please, Mr. President, to the Councilman Garcia.
Yes, can we send a, a letter to uh, HR director and ask her to appear before his council at the next regular meeting?
Roll call please.
Gonzalez.
No.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange. Branch.
Yeah.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Monroe.
No.
Franciscus.
Yes.
Any other old business? Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Um, if you remember our last, a meeting, I asked a letter be sent to Natalie and also the mayor. Explaining what the process was for the beach, uh, I guess cleanup and what they were gonna do about the water. Since it, the water is so bad and rated so bad by uh, item, and I have yet to receive any correspondence. Um, I'd advise anybody to stay out of the waters, um, because you might get sick, because those levels are very high.
Moving on, do we have any new, uh, do we have any new business?
Yes.
I had the clerk's office sent here a letter about the situation at the Coach Building. The Brownell Facility, that's some carpet chairs that's been gone, that's been like that for the last few years. I never, I did get a response, the clerk's office, to me, that she was on the vacation. However, she was sent a representative here, are you from Coach? But you do face, it's only because I say that, I don't know, so therefore, no one showed up to answer the question that I had. The Coach Building, being still there, and the fence got getting ready to demolish, and all of a sudden, everything stops. No one got answers. Same thing with, same thing with the building out at the carpet chair, same thing, nothing's happened. I got tenants that they can place, put it in another apartment, they went from a two room apartment to a one bedroom, and that's just cluttered up. But yet, they got moved with any new tenants and two bedrooms. I don't think that should be, I think, about, not uh, true about it, I'll find out, because I want some answers. Quite sure, you go ahead, this is, you know, your district like that, and it's going like that, and you click, you should have, want some answers as well. Of, all the questions are coming to me, so, when it comes to me, I gotta take action on it. You know, I think, that's where I am, that's where I've always been, always been too.
Thank you. Councilman Garcia. Yeah, that's President, uh, sounded like we had an issue of uh, department is not answering. Councilman's questions, they were kind enough to send up correspondence to try to get answers, and they gave up. But like, I just, just get us to the Councilwoman Gonzalez. And then Councilman Hill, send a letter for them to appear before his council.
Do we have any other new business, moving on to public expression? Can you please keep your comments three minutes and refrain from any abusive language to the audience, council members, or the community? I believe we do have one, this Georgina Gladys.
Good evening, my name is Georgina Gladys, and I'm here on behalf of Logan's Law, Logan's Peace. We're a local five oh one C three founded in memory of Logan Gladys. He was a sweet little ten year old boy who happened to be autistic. One of the symptoms of autism is eloping, and unfortunately, in August of twenty twenty two, he escaped from his backyard. And was hit and killed by a train behind his home. His mom wanted to take that tragedy and create a foundation in his memory, so no one will ever forget her little boy. And so she can give back to the special needs community. We host two free sensory events a year, a sensory Easter egg hunt and a sensory Santa visit. Each event has accommodations and modifications, so not to cause any overstimulation or any frustration. This is where children and parents can feel comfortable and not ostracized, everyone's on an even playing field. We also host two fundraisers a year, our golf outing and our autism walk. The funds raised for these two events allows us to continue our mission and our two initiatives, Project Five Zero. Bents with bags help first responders deal with special needs individuals and dementia patients by providing communication devices. Noise cancelling headphones and sensory toys to help calm the individual down in emergency situations. The bags also come with autism training, with the help of donations, sponsorships in our fundraisers. We've distributed over four hundred bags across Lake County. Most recently, ten bags were to the East Chicago Police Department, sponsored by the Indiana Harbor Lions Club. We've also made the town diary a Project Lifesaver community, which brings me to the reason I'm here tonight. I'd like to personally invite each of you to participate in our golf outing on Friday, June thirteenth at Wicker Park. Whether it be playing around the golf, sponsoring a vote, or even sharing your event on social media. Um, we are still working our way across Lake County, so if you know anyone or a business. They would think, be willing to donate or sponsor, please share this with them, and pass that my info on for them, please.
Motion for adjournment, big motion for adjournment.
Second.
A third. Motion was made by Councilman Hill, seconded by Councilman Lantner. Roll call please. Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Hill. Winfield.
Yeah.
Garcia, no. Branch. Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yeah.
Franciscus.
Yes.